Thank you. Have any other questions on gap waiver?
I'll just make a clarification, something that comes every year.
Yes, sir.
In front of the commission, so, yep. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number one, 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 zero, two, five, dash, one.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none with a roll call vote, Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven B, consider approval of a temporary exception to vacation leave carryover policy interim city manager Quinde.
Currently, the city has a personnel policies and guideline that the city commission adopted by resolution. It was adopted in 2020 and last amended in February of 2025. It permits employees to carry over up to 160 hours of accrued vacation leave each year. Any vacation leave that is not used in excess of 160 hours, they lose on January 1st. Because the city has been short staffed due to resignations and also challenging, challenging recruitments, recruitment challenges, a lot of employees, we've gotten it down, I'd say to less than a dozen, but have been unable to use vacation as they would like to. We have quite a few people who are taking chunks of time off now. Trying to get that down, but what I'm asking for is a one-time waiver by the commission that would allow, on a case-by-case basis, for the city manager to approve a extension of anything over 160 hours into 2026, but whatever is extended would have to be used by April 1st of 2026. So that way they're not billing it up and carrying it from year to year. It just gives them that 90-day window, try to get that down. If they can't, then they'll lose it. By doing so, it doesn't cost us anything, the city money, but it also recognizes the city commission's commitment to employees who postpone their vacation to sustain essential services while restoring their normal carryover by April 3rd.
Questions for staff on this item?
How many people do you think are affected?
I would say we're probably down to six.
Six, okay. And I don't know how that works from a record-keeping perspective, does that will only affect the, if they have 160 hours on December 31st, anything they accrue going forward won't be affected?
Correct.
Okay.
So if, as an example, if an employee had 170 hours on December 31st, on January 1st, it would be cut down to 160. If you allow this case-by-case exception, I would provide something in writing to Shayha, who's also our human resource director, that employee X can carry about this much until April 1st. So they would continue to accrue, but they would get additional 90 days to use that, an extra.
So just for sake of example, if I've got 170 hours on December 31st, I just have to use 10 by April, and then I can accrue up to whatever, and I just have to use whatever that is by the end of next year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. They just have to be down to 160 by April?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any further questions on this?
I would make a motion to approve a temporary exception to the vacation leave carryover policy.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none with a roll call vote, Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven C, temporary suspension of water service disconnections interim city manager Quinde.
Currently, city code provides that water and sewer service charges shall be used or due and payable from customers no later than 15 days following the reading of the water meters. And it also says that after that due date, a penalty of 5% shall be added to the original amount of said bill. Doesn't get a lot of leeway. However, the next section says that if a bill remains unpaid for a period of 10 calendar days after the due date, water and sewer service may be discontinued and disconnected at discretion of the city. Last week, I directed city staff to not do disconnections. On average, each month, we have about 80 people who make the disconnection list. And then by the time we get to disconnection time, that whittles down. Last month, we were actually lower than normal, it was 59. We didn't shut anybody off, but out of the 59 who were on the disconnect list, 29 remained, so we had 30 that paid. The reason that I suspended that was the uncertainty of the government shutdown and the impact it has not only on federal employees, but on SNAP benefits. So rather than ask the city commissioner, the mayor, to call a special meeting to do so, the city code allowed me to do it temporarily. So what I'm asking for the commission to do is either, one, in the temporary suspension that I implemented last week for water services disconnected for non-payment, or two, establish a longer-term rule or policy during the government shutdown, and then in conjunction with those, either suspend or waive the late fees. So if you if you say, okay, you suspended it, next month, we're going back to normal, the question would be, do you want to suspend the wait, the late fees or waive those for the time that I suspended disconnection? Or two, if you establish a longer term, to whatever that is that you want, do you want to suspend and waive the late fees in conjunction? Because that says that we shall, but we'd need council direction to do either one of those.
Just, I got background, the reason that this is all, all this came to light, there was just, it was one of those things where I don't know that we would have had that many people affected by it, but it just seemed like the good thing to do. I just kind of thought about, you know, folks, especially if they weren't getting their their subsidy for food, if they're having to make the choice between food and keeping their water turned on for their home, it just kind of, it felt like the right thing to do. And I'm glad we could get it taken care of temporarily administratively. I don't really think we need to have a longstanding process for this, it doesn't happen very often. And it looks like we're pretty close to getting that, getting the government reopened now. So I don't think it would be anything that even goes past, you know, this month shut-off period. I guess personally, my thoughts are, if we can do a you know, waive late fees and disconnect fees for, you know, this time period, and then have everything go back to normal, starting in that December payment period or billing period. I don't.
Are we subject to cold weather for the water utility? Is that just?
Typically, that's
Just gas and electric?
Gas and electric.
Okay.
And as a municipality, if you were a public power community, you would not be subject to it.
It's only KCC regulated or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess, Mr. Ryan, my understanding is that you would, your recommendation, your suggestion is that we would not shut off anything through December 1? Did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, because that next shut-off period would be, is that the 5th, 5th of December? So starting that, it would be back to normal procedures, assuming that it opens back up this week? Theoretically.
Yeah, when the first meeting in December, well, actually, we have a meeting November 24th.
Yeah.
But if it doesn't, we can
We would know then where we could suspend it as well.
Would you want to just make a contingent on that, assuming the government's open and SNAP and everything's, and I'm, did the SNAP payments come out?
Well, they did, but then some news outlets say that they were asked to call them back.
Okay.
Because of how uncertain it is, my recommendation, if that's the course that you would want to take, is that you direct us to lift the temporary suspension and waive the late fees and reconnection fees for those. Well, there wouldn't be any reconnection fees, you just need to waive the late. Did this?
And then if it happens to not be resolved by the 28th, we can?
Keep it going.
Extended.
Refresh, yep.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
But if it gets, they open everything back up, it won't be on the agenda, we'll just go back to business.
Right. And I just, I just don't want to create a policy that happens once every five, six years, and it's kind of on a case-by-case basis.
Might happen again in January. I don't know if it, I don't know if it's a terrible idea to have a policy, just know that is, and, you know, I guess can save 10 minutes of meeting time.
Yeah, well, and it's tough to do, because sometimes they will, you know, still temporarily fund those programs with the CR versus reopening the government. So those could be funded still without the reopening of the government. But it's, that's what's tough is
I think
The rule is there are no rules.
You have the option now of
Do whatever they
Assemble or what to happen, or the city to administratively suspend it and then bring it back to the commission. And if it was urgent, just ask for a special meeting, but because of the way the billing goes and your commission meetings go, and how CRs can and can't go, what they are going to fund and aren't, rely on the ordinance rather than trying to craft a policy for every possible scenario.
Is there, I guess, as, as a policy, you just said, don't have a policy, but would it make sense to have a policy that would essentially sus, I mean, if the government is shut down to suspend any shut-offs, I mean, the entitlement programs are certainly a concern, but there's a lot of people who also aren't getting paychecks, uh, who are, and a lot of them are still working too. So I think that there's, you know, in the event of a shutdown, which is, like you said, it's fortunately very, very rare, I think it's good to, you know, have clear-cut guidance, so there's not any question marks or gray area for the administrator, city manager.
Yeah.
Is that something that would you want to bring a draft policy?
Anything?
Next meeting, or, I mean, I think as long as the government's shut down, it makes sense for us not to shut off utilities. I don't, I'm sure that there's some more things that we could, we could suss out in a in a larger policy, I guess, probably even relating to employees and
And I'm, I'm all about making sure that the rules are standardized and we have policies and this one just is a little complicated because a shutdown can be as short as three days or you know, this is a story where it's been going on for so long. Not to go against your recommendation, it just, you have a, you have a method now. And then based on who's the commission at the time of the next shutdown, then they can make decision, yes, based on the totality of circumstances, we direct you to extend that.
Yeah, and I guess in my mind, I think the policy would just address the inter, the time period from a shutdown until we have a meeting. I think at that, I mean, to me, it makes sense to ask the question of the commission at that time, but just to give the city manager some guidance, I guess, in that, that time period from a shutdown until the next meeting.
I think I guess make it more clear, because you can administratively do it now, just make it more cut and dry that.
I mean, I think
The least things that you can legislate, the better.
Yeah.
The least things you can legislate, the better, because you start putting yourself in pigeonholes. But it makes sense that you have a new manager come whenever, give them some guidance, whether that comes through an ordinance and in city code, or that comes through, hey, we're hiring, here's our expectations. And a key for your new manager should be communication. And looking at things that, hey, this possibly could happen.
So are you thinking like explicitly, I guess, delegating that authority to the city manager between the shutdown and our next commission meeting? Because then we'd still have a say, but that manager at the time could
I mean
administratively, it, it'd be clear that they can administratively do this.
The worst-case scenario would really be that it would be a three-week period where they would be, at, at least the way our meeting schedule is now, where there would be decision made and no meeting.
Rather than say government shutdown, would it make more sense to say extraordinary circumstances? Because there could be other things that happen either at the state level.
COVID.
Then we
Stock market crashes.
Well, we had that too, early part of the year with the extreme cold. Were we going to do shut-offs, I think?
Yeah, so we couldn't get to the
You can shut them off because there was so much snow.
Yeah, couldn't find the meters.
The, the city manager can do that for extraordinary circumstances and then add something that says, but they must report that to the city commission and then be reaffirmed the next regular scheduled meeting.
We have some emergency policies already, I mean, maybe we just clarify those to include government shutdown or lack of funding or COVID outbreak.
Yeah.
We'll come back with some suggestions, whether the policy are changed to the code and let you
Just want to make it, try to keep it as simple as possible.
We'll, we'll hash it out, bring you some more. But the intent is that during something like that, that we could do that, it's clear that that's what you'd want to do until the next time you
I think even if those situations are unlikely, it's good to have a guiding document so that the responses are consistent.
Yep. Agreed.
I'll make a motion if the commission's comfortable with that. I would make a motion that we suspend and waive any late fees with water service and suspend disconnections until the December cycle. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, or yeah, I mean, that's clear, that makes sense to you.
I guess pending reopening of the government.
Just to clarify by the motion, I understand that this what we suspended now is fine, we're waiving the penalties and unless something changes, the government reopen, then on the next disconnects, we're back to business as usual. And if, if they don't reopen, we're back to talking again. Okay, perfect.
And I'll second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none with a roll call vote, Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item under heading eight items for discussion is eight A, discussion regarding use of city-owned property interim city manager Quinde.
Yeah, on, in front of the commissioners is an outline that discusses what the city may or may not lease following the statutes, and not to get too much into the weeds, but this is more of the foundation for information for the commission as we move forward with various leases that we have. For example, some of our farm leases expire at different times of year, and they all have different rates. One of the things we're working towards is making them all expire at the end of the year, and we use a rate that changes when the conditions change. Can't remember the name of it, but there's a rate that's used, and Shayla's been working hard on this. So when we lease ground to somebody that forms it, there's a rate that's established by the federal government, CEO or something, and we change the lease to have that one. So if I, the city leased land to Commissioner Witt at $40 an acre, but then all of a sudden it jumped to 60, and then a month later, we lease different land to you, and we're leasing it for 60, you feel like, well, he's getting 40. We use it by that federal standard, then everybody's treated the same. That makes sense. And yeah, I won't go into all the different types of leases, they're just background for you, but agriculture leases like we do now, you can do leases for wreck and event, airport leases, which we do for the hangars, community and civic leases, economic development leases, and then utility and infrastructure leases. As we bring those back to you, I'll refer to this document more, talking about which one, which category they fall into and why we're recommending changes, just wanted to get it on your radar and and some background and framework for future conversations.
Any questions on this item?
My only input is just, yeah, to make it as even, and I guess evenly applied as possible across, across everyone, so if there's a way to do that, I think that'd be helpful, that it's adjusting for everyone at the same rate.
Yes, sir.
And what if that rate isn't updated due to a government shutdown? Just keep it the same.
Do we have any further questions on this item? Seeing none with the eight B, review and adoption of prioritized stormwater drainage project list, public works director Anderson.
Brad is off, having to try to burn vacation, get rid of it. And I just want to point out that the agenda item title, it's my fault in the naming it improperly, I'm not asking you to adopt anything, we're just for review and discussion. As we've talked about before, the city has a many areas that have drainage issues from stormwater. In front of you is a PowerPoint that I was going to have up on the screen, I apologize to people who can't see it, but if you want a copy of it, just let me know after the meeting, and I can send you a copy by email. So the first or the second slide that you'll see there, that is a map of the city and all those yellow areas, which may be hard to see, at least on mine it is, that's every storm inlet that the city has in town. I put that in there because it's hard to, I guess, visualize, wow, we have that many storm inlets throughout the entire city. The second one is the priority areas, taking a street map of the ci, of the city and highlighting the intersections or the areas that have stormwater drainage issues. You'll see a blue rectangle covering, I'd say probably a third of those. And we believe that the southeast drainage issue that was discussed back in 2020 after a study by, I believe, Olson, if we can get that done and corrected, the areas that are in that blue rectangle should be mitigated. They should either go away or the drainage issues much, but we're thinking that's the biggest bang for the buck. And then thanks to Brad and Joe Hawk for providing these pictures. It's helpful for me since I haven't lived here before, but you can see there at Brady and Northeast Forest, what that looks like. When we get heavy rains, there is photograph of Brady and Northeast Six, that one's looking south, down Brady and west down Northeast Six. Cedar at the West CVB parking lot, some of these look like lakes. South Buckeye at Southwest Second, looking south on Buckeye and east on Southeast Second. South Buckeye looking south from Southeast Six, Third and Mulberry, Fourth and Mulberry, and then Northwest Fifth and Cedar looking down. Northwest Fourth and Buckeye looking west. Now I will continue going through all those, but you can see that even with a a non-flooding rain, just a significant rain, a heavy downpour, that there's quite a few stormwater drainage areas within the city. If you look at the slide number 15, you can even see that that water comes in so fast and so hard that it pops off the stormwater manhole cover. Those are pretty heavy iron covers, pretty good force. On slide 16, you can see, this is what I refer to as the southeast drainage project. As I mentioned, that was a study done in 2025 by Olson engineers. And you can see the yellow line that comes, starts at the south part of town, goes to the right or the east, then moves south, and then drains or goes back to the east, and then finally drains into a tributary. The issue with this one is, well, there's multiple issues. One, they use a clamshell pipe, which most pipes you think of for drainage are circular. This one is actually clam-shaped, like it's been pressed down. That's how it was installed. Two, it has some pretty significant turns there. You can see where it goes from southeast and then straight south, that's a holdup. And then when it turns back to the east, there's another turn in the stormwater pipe. The stormwater pipe wasn't buried deep enough also, or where it's at, it's, most of that is underneath farm ground, and there have been vehicles that have actually gone through the soil and crushed into the storm drain. Back in 2020, Olson did a study, they estimated that project to replace all of that line at more than $20 million. I've asked them to redo that cost, I just can't imagine that it would be $20 million, because even if you put in concrete drainage pipe, let's say you put in 36 diameter and you have to go pretty deep, you're not talking very many miles, so I've asked them to revise that. But I put this in the slide because based on the report that was done in 1998, and then the 2018 report, and then again Olson with the 2020 study, this would provide the most relief if this project was done first. If you go back to that rectangle I showed you with those drainage areas, it should open those up, it's not a word, well, freely. So in your packet is a list, we didn't list every one because, well, it'd probably take more paper than doing, but the high-impact drainage improvement priorities based on the stormwater management policy adopted by the city commission. The first recommended area would be the southeast drainage. We believe that doing that would fix the drainage issues at Fourth and Brady, Fourth and Buckeye, Fourth and Mulberry, Fifth and Cedar, and Fifth and Brady. Second top priority would be South Buckeye at Southeast Six, then Seventeenth and Cedar, Eighth and Walnut, Walnut, Second and Walnut, and Second and Buckeye. But what I ask the commission to do is, one, provide us feedback, and not tonight, if you have time to think about it and look what's in your packet, but in two weeks, provide feedback on that list and the information we provide, and then either reprioritize those, tell us to look at other areas, but eventually have you adopt, these are our top priorities, and that will be the marching orders for city staff to go find funding to fix these in this order.
I have a couple of questions. Is there an existing easement for that drainage pipe through that? I know it runs through a bunch of farm ground too.
I would assume there is, but off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
I couldn't imagine that the city would build it there without having permission, but we can look those up.
Yeah. And then I think, I think one of the biggest cost factors in that estimate was having to go under two railroad tracks. I think that was one of the big things that Olson discussed was that made it a lot more tedious of a process to get approval from them, and then having to go underneath both of them, so, I don't know, I mean, it doesn't
Well, that, that sounds reasonable. I would not argue, but I would point out that, hey, that, that is 20 million, and a certain amount is attributed to the railroad crossings under the their rules that they have to operate under, we should be able to work with them for them to pay those costs for that section there, which would significantly reduce the city's cost. And that would benefit them because if it's built better and water's flowing better, it's less work they have to do down the road. So that would be part of the getting that cost down. Thank you.
Has there been any effort undertaken to understand the, the current status of some of those drainage tubes?
As far as we can look with the camera system that we can either borrow from Junction City or surrounding cities, or the local plumber, I did ask Joe to get some cost estimates, not bids, just estimates, for them to camera the southeast drainage area, and then these top priorities to see exactly what those issues is, other than us just saying they're undersized, that bid came in at $47,000.
I guess just a perspective is the, the dramatic difference down by the CVB, just based off of what looks like a handful of rocks in that tube. I don't know what the condition was before, obviously, but I just, my concern, I mean, you probably see it all summer long too, is people blowing grass and leaves whenever out into the street, and I'm sure that there's no shortage of composted material in those tubes. I just, before we even talk about spending, and, I mean, I, my guess, my wild guess is you could probably buy one of those systems for less than $1,000. I don't know what, what we're looking at there, but 47 seems aggressive.
I actually thought about reaching out to a university or a trade school and see if they would do that as part of their training program. Hey, we've got this project, we'll cover your expenses to be here, will you do it for us for free? Kind of trade.
Yeah, I just, I, just seeing how dramatic that change was from, again, it's kind of hard to get perspective and the size of the tube and everything just from those pictures, but it doesn't, it's not like it was packed full of rocks, you know, it didn't seem like. And again, I don't know if everybody was paying attention, but yeah, there was a little bit of water in that corner, but it wasn't the swimming pool like it was the last couple of months. And of course, it hasn't rained for four years too.
Well, and you, those pictures, if you remember, you don't see trailing rocks of smaller varying size leading up to, to that, which would be indicative of them coming into the stormwater as opposed to a collapse straight down or a hole there.
Yeah, they seem to be in that one specific area, they caught them, so.
I think, actually, somebody had mentioned, I was discussing this with them, there's something that's used in the oil fields, and this, maybe, maybe your people will know something out in Russell, but there's some type of a, a pig or something that they run through those.
Yeah.
Like Like inflatable bladder basically to clean that stuff out. So I don't know if that's another avenue. I mean, rather than running cameras, maybe just run the cleanout devices through them and see what you come up with.
Generally, the pig companies won't do that unless they know what the conditions are. But yes, that is a good idea. Once we know those conditions and say we do get a fully made in dollar cost, one of the things you can look at was water lines, sewer lines and, and stormwater drainage pipes is take a pig in, clean it out. It'll tell you where the issues, because that pig at the same time can also send out something, X-rays, and it'll tell you the thickness of those, even if it's concrete, if it's metal. And then if certain sections are good, but they're starting to show deterioration, you can actually go in and line those from the inside out. And then the pig goes in, it lines them, it hardens, and then it's as good as brand new. So there's all kinds of options and you use those for places where you don't want to dig up somebody's ground or if it's a long way under a, a concrete street, saves a ton of cost by doing it. So there's options to reduce those costs we always look at. But first we'd like for the commission to give us a priority list and then we start marching to get those done.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see if you could find somebody that would bite on that trade school or tech school that would
Yeah.
go camera them for free if we cover expenses. That seems like a good learning opportunity for them too.
Yeah. So if there's anybody that knows people at Kansas State University or I can check with Fordham State or even some of the trade schools like in Beloit.
Yeah, like Manhattan.
The trade schools there and just ask.
Yeah, Manhattan Tech.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got options.
Save us a ton of money.
Yeah. Maybe any further questions on this item? I was just going to comment that that's a very smart and multi-talented pig.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
It was festering. I couldn't help it.
I had a, a public works director that worked for the city for forty years and told him I wanted to pig our lines and he thought maybe I was having a stroke at this.
All right. If we have no further questions on that, we will move to item eight C, review and discussion of draft revised purchasing policy interim city manager Quinn there.
This is one of the items that we're working on. You may remember during the budget process that some of the things we talked about, looking at our operations, our policies and how do we become more efficient, more transparent, not only to the commission but to the public? And then make sure that everybody's operating on the same standard. This is one of many that we're working on. The current purchasing policy, I believe, was adopted in two thousand and twenty-three. It's a narrative format. And from my perspective, it lacked clarity as far as where to look for certain items. The proposed one is reorganized. It has numbered sections and titles as a matrix for quick reference to improve readability. It's aligned with auditing standards and what our, our auditors look for. But it also has implementation items in there. So in front of or in your packet, you have the current purchasing policy, you have the proposed one. And then there is a table that compares the two and I'll run through those pretty quickly. And again, I'm not asking for any action tonight. I'd just like to go through this, get the commission's feedback. And then as we move forward and come up with something that the commission agrees with, I'm going to bring you a resolution to adopt or if you choose to just leave what we have in place. The purpose and authority. We just expanded that to include some transparency, equity, economy, integrity and compliance. It now aligns with the Government Finance Officers Association procurement policy framework. By emphasizing transparency and fairness, the objective was combined into a single paragraph in our current policy. But we changed it into a bulleted objectives. It makes it more clear. It simplifies it. It encourages competition and public confidence. Again, this one also aligns with the Government Finance Officers Association model policy structure. Also on page one, public access and records, that was not addressed in the current policy, so we added this section. For things like bid tab availability, public access to records and retention standards that promotes transparency and aligns with Kansas statute and the GFOA standards. Roles and purchasing authority on page one, current policy outlines the authority. It's a narrative form and the thresholds are not consistently defined. So what we did is we adopted a tabular format which defines limits, the competition type and approval requirements. Again, it improves clarity and accountability and it's consistent with GFOA and LKM models. On page two, there's a, a matrix, for lack of a better word. In our current policy, there's not one and thresholds, methods and approvals are mentioned, but they're scattered. They also lack definition for informal versus formal bids. So in the proposed one, we added a formal matrix of thresholds, clarified informal and formal bid requirements. And it added a no purchase splitting clause in there. So the purchasing threshold is, say, twenty-five thousand before we bring it to the city commission. And if something's thirty thousand, we don't tell the vendor, well, just bill us fifteen now and fifteen next month. Not that it happens here, but when you read stories across the U.S., we just put it in there, plus the auditors prefer that. But that's a common municipal best practice and aligns with the LKM procurement's matrix sample. On page three is the equipment reserve plan purchases. That's not included in the current policy, so we added one. And what it states is that equipment purchases included in the city commission approved equipment reserve plan. That's the general fund or utility reserves do not require additional approval if the purchase is at or below what's in the plan. And that reflects the ICMA and the GFOA's best practice for efficient capital planning and budgeting. It avoids redundant approvals while maintaining accountability. And this method is endorsed by the LKM A and the City County Municipal Finance Officers Association as a model policy. I've thrown a lot of acronyms at you. The GFOA, that's the National Finance Officers Association. The CCMFOA is the state levels. On page five, there's a general reference, our sales and use taxes, a general reference in the current policy. In the new one, we clarified the city's exemption and contractor requirements. That ensures that we're compliant with the Department of Revenue Audit Standards. We also addressed grant and federal funds. It's not in the current policy. But we added a federal procurement and uniform guidance language that follows two CFR two hundred. And that's required for grant eligibility and compliance. Doesn't mean that because it's not in the policy now that you're not going to get grants. But if a granting agency said, let me see your procurement policy, which is not unheard of as part of the application process, that would be a red flag. Disposal of property, it is in the current policy, but it lacks thresholds and documentation. So we added disposal thresholds that anything less than twenty-five thousand dollars, the city manager can approve. Greater than twenty-five thousand requires commission approval. Anything that would be donated, say to a school would regardless of costs would be, require commission approval.
I did, we did jump over page two. If there's anything on there that you explicitly wanted to highlight.
It's kind of like the
I know. Yeah.
Thing that I gave you.
Do you have my laptop?
No, I don't.
Okay.
What I was talking was commission to call off about the packets. He pointed out that one of the proposals, I didn't give you all the pages for it, so we'll have to get that correct. Okay, so competitive procurement methods, that's listed currently, but it lacked clear definitions. And we also, we clarified those definitions and we added qualifications based selection, which is also sometimes heard as RFQs or request for qualifications. And that's generally when you're looking for somebody based on, do they have the experience to do the job that you want. Once you select somebody based on that, then you negotiate the price. By adding that, it aligns with Kansas statutes and GFOA recommendation. Bit administration, bit timing and opening process is briefly mentioned. We expanded that section with notice, evaluation criteria and tabulation requirements. This ensures fairness and audit defensibility. Bonds and insurance, in the current policy, it's mentioned only for construction. The new one, we added explicit statutory language to comply with KSA sixty to eleven eleven. What that does is clarifies legal requirements and risk management standards. Full source and non-competitive section in the current allowed, but lacked any criteria. So for that section, we added justification procedures, written rationale and city manager approval. Again, this ensures accountability and mirrors GFOA guidance. Emergency purchases are authorized in the current policy, but there's minimal detail. So we added a documentation requirement, city manager authorization requirement and post-event commission reporting. What that does is improve fiscal discipline and ensures transparency. But currently, under the policy, we could authorize an emergency purchase on this new one, even if it was a five thousand dollar item or we wouldn't need it then. If it was a twenty-five thousand and one dollar item, under certain criteria, we could do that, but it requires that we notify you of that purchase, so it ensures transparency, not something that you hear about two months later. Local preference, it is in the current policy without specifics, though we defined a clear five percent threshold, limits and exclusions. What that does is balance the support for local vendors with fairness and competition. Environmentally preferable and the cost measurement is in the two thousand and twenty-three version. We retained it and clarified the required disclosure when it's used. In the proposed, it's a hundred thousand dollars. Then you'd have to do a life cycle cost analysis. Currently, it says you'll do a life cycle cost analysis, but it doesn't say for what. But technically you do it for everything we purchased, which is not practical. Purchase cards, limits are listed, but there's not sufficient controls within the current policy. But we added audit documentation and disciplinary authority for the use of those purchase cor- cards. What that does is add internal control and it's a best practice recommended by our auditors. Sales and use tax, there's a general reference. We clarified the city's exemption and contractor requirements. Again, that's auditing best practice. Grants and federal funds are not addressed. Contracts and service agreements, there's no term or renewal limits. There are some suggested limits in the financial and budgetary policies. But if you're looking at procurement policy or purchasing, they should, they should be in the same place. So we added a five-year maximum term, renewal guidance and mandatory clauses such as a non-procurement clause. And that aligns with model policy. The barment and suspension, that is included. And what that is, is somebody violates a contractor, violates some portion of a, of a contract or an agreement. We can bar or suspend them from doing future business with the city. That was not defined in the current. We had a due process, written notice and right to respond and appeal process. So that reflects the GFOA, LKM and the federal two CFR one eighty vendor accountability standards. Disposal of property, I went over that one, ethics, conflicts, gratuities and confidential. It had a citation to say law when it talked about conflicts, gratuities and confidentiality. We expanded that, added ethical standards, clarified gratuity prohibition and defined acceptable nominal items such as a cup of coffee. And that aligns with the GFOA ethics framework and the league's model language. Fiscal controls and audit readiness, there's no section in the current one. So what we added was for fiscal controls, no purchase order, no work. We, the city has the software to do requisitions and purchase orders. You've heard me mention that before. We're implementing that once everybody's trained up on it. And so if you need something and it's fifteen thousand dollars, you don't go get it because that's within your spending authority and they're just bringing a receipt back. You have to put in a requisition. It has to be approved. Is that software? You put in the requisition and your account code, if it's over budget, it flags it. So it requires the city manager or finance director to override it. But that's the accountability. And once it is approved, then it turns into a purchase order. That's when they can go make the order. So it's not going to slow them down by days. You know, if somebody needs something right away, you're talking fifteen minutes. But it's better tracking and accountability. Sales to and from the city and conflicts, it's mentioned briefly. We added a section on disclosure and abstention from substantial interest. And that is intended to prevent ethical conflicts. Public work change orders is included, but it lacked clarity. So we updated that the city manager may approve up to the lesser of fifty thousand or three percent of a contract amount if no scope change. And then commission approval is required for a higher amount or any scope change of the work. So you're doing a three million dollar industrial park. The city commission has approved the contract and the lift station is five hundred thousand dollars. Well, by the time we get to it and get it purchased and all that, it comes in at five fifty-one, five hundred and forty-nine thousand. This would allow the manager to make that change order or approve it as long as it doesn't go over the budget. So if your budget, three million for this project, you can make that change order, but you can't exceed that cap. Anything bigger than that would require commission approval. Or if you change the scope of work, though at the industrial park, if we're putting in a road, sewer, lift station, water, that type of stuff. And the commission approves the roads going from here to here and okay, we want to move it. Whatever that, we went ten feet to the left because we're right away or easement issue. Doesn't matter, even if it's no cost change, change in the scope of work requires the city commission's approval. Equal opportunity and nondescript. Discrimination is not in the current policy, so we added a clause, reference, referencing Kansas Act against discrimination, which is required under statutes. So the best practices that we added, transparency, public access to records, tab posting, vendors, processes, fiscal control, the threshold matrix, the no P O, no work and audit checklist, capital planning, vendor accountability, ethics and conduct, grant compliance, disposal and asset management and sustainability. Know I went over that a lot, but there's a lot of changes. Are there any questions or comments?
Would it be more efficient to go through those now or would you prefer an email?
I'm always preferable if we do it in the meeting because one person's question or comment may invoke something for another commissioner.
Okay, I'm going back to the beginning here. I think kind of the first thing to establish, and I think your software should flag this, like you said, but making sure that all the purchases do fall within the budget.
Yeah.
And that, it doesn't matter what the limit is if it's not in the budget.
Yeah, that takes it a step further is we're held accountable by fund balance. The software, if they had a line on him, say five thousand dollars for legal and they exceed that or it's going to exceed it, they can't approve it.
I wanted to, so you've got exceptions for service contracts. And you kind of mentioned like splitting things and I just kind of wanted to maybe make sure there's enough clarity on that if there is a contract and, you know, whether it's one year, multi-year, six months, that those, those situations are addressed to avoid any skirting of the rules, I guess.
Yeah. And I can clarify that, a, a general practice that I like to follow, can't cite one of those acronyms right now, but if a service contract is going to exceed the spending threshold for the city manager or if it's going to exceed one year, even if it's a five thousand dollar agreement or a thousand dollar agreement, if it's going to extend one year. If it's going to extend one year, then it should come before the commission multiple years. Is that, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I just, I think it's a little bit ambiguous, so the exception to the general rule is maintenance and service contracts. So arguably, and again, it's not clear who has what authority where. There's obviously different levels between the superintendents, department directors, city manager, city commission. Can a, can a department director, for example, approve a maintenance and service contract if it's up to twenty five thousand dollars? Or is it your, each person's respective spending limit?
Be each person's respective spending limit. So a department director could do up to five thousand dollars. But they also have to have the budget authority. So if somebody wanted to, I'm just gonna say a service contract to clean their offices and they have nothing in their line item for cleaning or they have a hundred dollars, then they can't. But that's where the these all tie together.
Yeah. And I don't know what, I don't know how the software works, but I mean, say for that example, they, they wanted to have a cleaning service come in. They don't have a cleaning budget, but they've got a maintenance budget or they've got something, another budget they can put it in, I guess. Is there any oversight into that? Does that go up to the next level or who, what, what is required to be approved by?
Anything up to twenty five hundred dollars requires just an invoice, the department head signature and the account code. And we chose that because it was actually lower. But during the summer, if Kelly makes a run to get supplies for the, the pool concession stand, there's times when she'll spend more than the five hundred dollars or the thousand dollars than I initially. But to get back to your, your question that, so if they do a purchase order, then let's say it's for cleaning services and they're like, I don't have any cleaning service, I'm gonna put it in maintenance. Anything from twenty five hundred and one up to higher requires that the finance director and I both look at. So the finance director is looking at it and it won't just be a number. It'll actually say what that line item is. So I don't have to, you know, look at this nineteen digit number that we have and see what it is. It'll say repairs and maintenance or it'll say cleaning. In addition, you may remember that we are also getting rid of this huge list of line item codes that we have. And we're narrowing that down to probably, I'd say eighteen.
So just in that scenario that you've given as an example, if someone said, hey, I'm gonna have a cleaning service come in. It's gonna be three hundred bucks a month. I've got a budget that's not quite, not quite cleaning services, but I can fit it under there and it's three hundred dollars a month. It's never gonna go to you to be approved. How are we gonna prevent, you know, nickels and dimes from getting through the cracks?
No, and that makes that makes good sense and we can add language to that, that only maintenance and service contracts under twenty five thousand and one year or less can be approved by the city manager. Anything that's twenty five thousand and one or more than one year requires to come to the city commission.
I guess what I'm saying is, I understand that and I think that's a great policy, but what, what if in that, say the department director says, hey, I'm gonna give you a contract to clean my building for three hundred dollars a month. My budget authority is twenty five hundred. I can squeeze it under this under other line item. How are those going to be reviewed? Or is there any process to review anything under the department director's spending limit?
Yeah, when both the finance director and I look at every bill and the same reports that you have, before those bills are paid, I get a printout, which you see in your packet. But with those, I get every bill or invoice that we actually get.
So you're actually, in addition to them being able to approve it onsite, you and or the finance director are
We both do.
We're both reviewing every transaction. Okay.
And is that codified in policy?
What's that?
That, that procedure of
Not in admission policy, but it's one of the ones that will be in staff policy. So
Yeah, cuz I don't know if that's just your way of doing things or
Well, it is, but that's one of the things, and I'm kind of digressing, but our water disconnects or our water connections or sewer connections, that's outlined in city code, which is a law. Can't change it, especially when it says you have shell. And it'll say, if you want a three quarter inch line, it's gonna cost you this much. I can't tell somebody, no, it's not going to. But what I can do administratively say is, okay, if Commissioner Wick comes in and he wants sewer tap, wants to hook up to the city sewer, this is the process we're gonna follow. You know, the application's gonna be here, it's gonna be sent to these departments, they're gonna review it, they're gonna sign off on it. We're gonna follow the city specifications, which are here, and here's the whole process. And then when it comes back and everybody signed off, then it goes back to the city clerk's office where originated and a work order is started. And then everybody's in the loop. When that work order is generated, now we're tracking it as far as, okay, it was approved. They attached the signed permit, so we can do that. The work is done, they get that information back and they close it out. They know how much they have to bill the person if we had to open a road. So those types of procedures and what we just talked about here will all be in a policy manual, an administrative one, operational. Even as how we handle disconnects. And it's not that we're micro, or micromanaging, but this way, we ensure that everything's standardized, that regardless of who the employee is that's filling in that day knows exactly what happens. And it improves communication, not only internally among staff, but with the city and our customers. So one day they come in and they're told to go to this office, the next day or a month later, you're supposed to go here and it's frustrating, so it clarifies it. Is, why saying yes? And I'll work on that B, maintenance and service contract, clarify. But I, I see the concern you're bringing up.
I think that was one of the, so just clarifying under B that it is the individuals hierarchy, I guess, that dictates it not just up to twenty five thousand dollars.
That would be under the matrix, but on tape one, this is for actual corn funds. And I can also add on there that any contract agreements, we also send as a city attorney from the beat, make sure that they meet all the requirements, such as another appropriation language.
I do have some concerns, I guess, on the equipment reserve plan.
Okay.
I guess my expectation that we would, would be that we would still approve those.
That's whatever the commission would like to do. I said, this is just looking at what those organizations recommend and other cities are using as best practices. The main, I guess, idea is that it only applies to equipment, not capital projects. So if in the capital improvement plan, it says you approve the plan for a twenty five thousand dollar mower, turf mower for the parks. Well, you approve that when you approve the budget. Then we come back in April and say, we want to buy this mower. Maybe this is a whole process again of, what was it budgeted for? Yes, you already approved it. Is it more than we did? This just cuts out that whole process because when you have people that are watching or sitting in the audience and they say, okay, in December, you talked about buying this, this and this. And now next year, you're buying all these other things and it looks like we're buying twice of what we're buying.
I just, I really like that level of oversight and I think that's, we can just educate people when that happens. So this was, hey, this was a thing that we approved in April and we're actually buying it now and approving the funds, the expenditure of those. Now, to me, that's a much better process.
But if that's, if it's controlled, I mean, that makes complete sense. But when you adopt the budget, you're already authorizing the expenditure of those funds for all of them. So when you adopt the budget, you're adopting a approval of expenditure of a maximum amount by fund. So for example, if you approve, let's say the general funds is five million dollar a year budget. That's what you're approving. You're not approving by what the police department gets. That's what you look at when you approve it, but the ordinance you adopt, you're approving no more, spending no more than this amount for this fund. The rest of that, unless you change how you adopt the budget, that's all handled administratively, within the framework of these types of things.
So what would that, would it not come back to us regardless to accept the bid? If we're spending anything over that twenty five thousand dollar amount? It's like, let's say it's for a vehicle and we got, you know, four bids from
As this is written, if that, if that vehicle, say you put forty thousand dollars in there for a truck, a three quarter ton truck, you approve it. So you're approving the capital improvement plan, we'll bring it to you for ten years. In twenty twenty six, you've already adopted the budget. You're only saying by what this says here, whatever's in that twenty twenty six column that we've approved, you don't have to bring it back to us unless the cost is both it's a forty thousand dollar truck and it's forty thousand and one dollars, we have to bring it back.
That's a little bit different than my understanding, I guess. And I'm not sure that my understanding is correct, but my understanding is the budget really authorizes the collection of those funds, not the expenditure.
It does both. When you adopt a budget, you're authorizing the collection of property tax. You're authorizing the transfer of certain funds. And then you're authorizing the expenditure of those funds, of those monies by fund.
But again, subject to the limits that we place on that, it's not, it's not carte blanche to say, spend everything in a, a maintenance budget or, or even a capital improvement budget.
Yeah, a capital improvement plan is a non-budgeted fund. You approve that because the statute requires that for cities to save money for capital improvements or equipment, that you have to establish those two funds. That's all it says in the statute. It doesn't say you have to approve them every year, you just have to establish. But best practices is to bring those to you every year during budget process. And your budgeting and financial policy requires that. Though even though the statute doesn't say we have to bring it to you every year, the commission, as a matter of policy, says every year during the budget, you're going to bring that to us.
So what would happen in the event the equipment reserve plan was approved? Let's just say twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six rolls around. And so I could see it a different, or the way it is now, you know, you could have a completely different commission and they could vote against that purchase.
Correct. Which, I mean, that's either, you can have pros and cons to both of it. Because when you adopt a budget and you're adopting the the framework of how the city's gonna operate for the next fiscal year. So you're saying, okay, you can, I guess the analogy would be you allocated five million dollars for the general fund. New commission comes in and says, well, we're gonna cut that to I mean, that's within the right and then they'll have to tell us, kind of like we had discussions before, what do you like us to cut? But this is not intended to take away oversight or anything like that. This is to streamline things.
And I, yeah, I get that. I, my, my thinking is if it's over the city manager approval limit, I would still like it to come to the commission. Personally, I don't think it's a bad thing to have to vote on it and review the bids. Even if it was already approved in that equipment reserve.
Yeah, I think the more transparency, the better. Even if it is less streamlined, I think having the option for the public to be involved is preferable to government efficiency.
I'm all for transparency, I've said it a dozen times. I'm not sure how that relates to what you're saying here. So when you adopt the capital improvement plan and equipment reserve, you're saying to the public and to city staff, here's our plan for ten years. These are our priorities as a commission, as a governing body.
And then
As opposed to
Yeah.
Six months later, you say, well, we gave you this plan, but you know, I don't think we'd want to have a white truck, so.
I'll give you a little context because I think this is important. When that capital improvement plan was thrown out, and I think you've looked at it and had some question marks of your own as you read that. I think, was it twenty million dollars we've got in there for a water tower? With, with this, if this was approved as it is, you could go out and bind us for a twenty million dollar water tower.
No, I couldn't.
There's, there's more steps you'd have to take, but
Bond, any type of money would require
I understand, bond, I would, I used, I didn't use the right word, but if we had twenty million dollars in the bank and a capital improvement plan that said you can spend twenty million dollars on a water tower, you could go do that, correct?
If I ask, no, because this says equipment. Any capital improvements, this is not, this is only equipment.
Okay, I think maybe, maybe you've mentioned anything that's in a capital improvement plan or the equipment reserve plan.
No, if I did, it clearly states the equipment reserve plan, capital improvement, regardless if it's in the general fund or a utility requires your approval. This is just equipment. And you know, we can call emergency or special meetings anytime we want, but say you authorize forty thousand dollars for a vehicle, a truck, and then city staff comes in and says, hey, rather than buy a new one, we found one for twenty thousand dollars over here, it's good to go. Why don't we buy that, we'll save fifteen thousand dollars. Well, then we've gotta have a special meeting and we'll have to go out for bids and try to get bids. Okay, here's this truck, there's everything it does. Give us a bid.
I don't think that's true, I mean, at least in your example, right? You're, if it's in the budget and it's less than twenty five thousand dollars, the city manager can approve that.
Oh, well, let's say it's thirty thousand.
Okay.
And so it's a used vehicle, it's thirty thousand dollars and we're like, that's gonna serve our purpose. A better question, it's a used tractor, or a used dump truck. A brand new dump truck is a two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. We found one that's now an X over here is gonna sell for a hundred thousand. We inspected, our mechanic inspects it. Then we bring it back to you, but without this exception, we've gotta go out for bids. Go out for bids for a used vehicle, we have to take all of those specs for that vehicle, submit, advertise for bids, nobody's gonna bid because they don't have exactly that. Then we schedule it for a meeting, we schedule it for a work study. Then we come back two weeks later and schedule it for a meeting for you to vote on. You're a month to two months down the road, they sold it, they're not gonna wait on it.
Yeah, I think that's probably gonna happen. I mean, the, I can't remember us everybodying anything used, so I don't think that that's probably a likely scenario. But if it is, if that is a scenario where there's a a vac or something like that, that's absolutely essential, then, and Junction City's selling one, then I think that's a perfect time to have a, a special meeting.
According to your own rules, you'd have to go out for bids. And you have to have it on a work study, according to what you said your preference was. Then you gotta come back two weeks later and have a meeting.
That's absolutely, that's absolutely my preference. That is absolutely my preference. I think the more, the more we can get the people out here involved, the better. Again, I think if we have a special meeting and we say, there's a, I mean, this, this once in a lifetime deal on a special piece of equipment has never happened in my four years. And maybe it happens all the time and we're just not sensitive to that. I don't know, is, anytime I've, anytime I've suggested that we look at anything used, I get into warranty issues and all sorts of other things. So again, I'm not sure how real world these hairs are that were splitting. But yeah, I think absolutely I would want that oversight and I think
If it's the commission's preference that you want to approve every piece of equipment that we buy over that twenty five thousand? I mean, there's, that's a policy decision, I'm completely a hundred percent behind whatever you what the will of the commission is. This is put in here as a way to streamline things and for those once in a lifetime exceptions. For example, you have a tandem axle dump truck with structural issues that the first bid was gonna be eighty thousand dollars to repair, that had wiring issues. So we started looking for used ones, we found a used one. Means that it's great, hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. About the time we're putting that on the agenda to bring to you and looking for money for it, we were able to find another person, a company, Galva, I think is the location, that would do it for twenty four thousand, something like that. So city staff isn't, and I know that's not what you're saying, but I just want to point that out. City staff isn't looking at all the shiny toys out there that we can buy. They are truly out there looking for what's the best bang for the buck that the city can get. But if the majority of the commission is not comfortable with it, we just mark it off and we bring everything to you like we have in the past.
My, my only comment is because, I mean, in my seven years of being up here, we've always um approved any, any of those purchases that were above the twenty five thousand. So it's kind of been accepted practice up here. The catch of recognizing it's an imperfect world is in my seven years of being up here, we haven't approved a capital improvement plan every year.
Right.
So um as a layered catch mechanism to catch those bigger purchases, that would be my perspective on to keep that um keep it as city policy that any of those equipment purchases exceeding twenty five thousand dollars come to the city. Just because I've seen the dysfunction of a capital improvement plan not getting approved every year. And so um.
And I see the, the point that all of you are having. Uh, I guess the one comment that I would have, being a short timer here is then if you don't have a capital improvement brought to you like your policy says, then say why? Where is it? That's your job. Bring it to us. You can't do your job, you're out. Because we have a lot of policies and ordinances that have not been followed or not, not been followed. And our purpose or what I'm working with the city staff in my short time here is to straighten those out and to make us more sufficient. Because we've always done something a certain way, doesn't always make it right. And I'm not talking about the seven years, but I get that with employees that have been someplace for four years, but we've always done it that way. But that doesn't make it the most efficient or the most right. That's why we have to adapt to the changing environment over here. Okay, I've got that cross off.
If there ever is a situation where it's imperative that we act quickly, I'm, I think we're all more than happy to get our butts here.
There's always exceptions to the rule to where the commission can hear the case and make a judgment. Or, or it's, the examples you guys were given of a exceptional circumstance where you're going to get a really good deal and it may violate purchasing policy to move forward with that purchase, then providing that justification back to um as needed is, is something that can be done.
Can you explain what you mean there? I want to make sure I understood you clearly.
The danger of talking too much. Um.
I have a good example, if you.
Go for it.
There's one example that sticks in my head that uh actually myself and the us two on the end voted to um intentionally go against our purchasing policy. We did that once uh with a vehicle bid from Home Automotive. Um, so there are exceptions every rule. I think that's what you were saying.
Yeah, sometimes this commission can override policy.
Oh, you can do it anytime.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that what, what I heard kind of sounded like it'd be okay for him to spend a hundred thousand dollars on a once in a lifetime deal and then ask us about it later. I just wanted to make sure.
No, before that happens.
We could vote to violate our own policy.
Correct, okay.
You guys can vote to violate any policy or change any law. Uh, and you hire a manager to run the day to day stuff, hold him or her accountable for doing it or not doing it. But at the same time, start trusting them, do the right thing. That includes uh city staff. Anything else on here?
I guess um just for guidance, I don't think this is ready for approval. I'd be open to, I guess, looking at another study session or another discussion item before we move forward with it. I guess we're talking about a pretty complex issue here, so.
Oh, yeah, at least.
And not.
At least one more rounded discussion, yeah.
Yeah, even at that point, if we want to take action at the next meeting, we can, even as an item for discussion. If there are any other minor changes that we need to make.
So other than clarifying the uh exceptions B, crossing out the equipment reserve plan, are there other changes or you're going to give this to us in two weeks?
I, I would like to kind of chew it up with a, with a pen here and shoot that over to you for, I guess, for another discussion. Just with a little bit more time to kind of chew on some of these.
So we can just, yeah, I guess, try to get your, any recommendations that come after the one change, make sure those get emailed.
Yeah, the only changes that I'll make are the ones talked about here. Any suggestions, commissioners that I get by email, I'll share with the rest of you. And then y'all direct me to make those changes at the next meeting.
Anything else on this one? Okay, here now we'll move to item eight D, discussion of use and investment of twenty twenty five temporary note proceeds. Interim city manager Quinde.
Yeah, you thought the last one was going to take a long time. Uh, in your packet and uh there is a PowerPoint here, and I apologize if it's not up on the screen. I should bother waiting. Ready? Uh, just to go over some definitions, temporary notes are also called temporary improvement notes or temporary obligation notes. Those are the uh vehicles that the city commission approved for three major projects. Uh, they're generally used to bridge uh finance of project before permanent financing uh is arranged. Uh, that, I believe that was the purpose of the general obligation temporary notes for the three major projects. A geo bond uh in contrast is a long term debt instrument usually for capital projects for things that don't directly produce a revenue stream themselves. A general obligation bond is one where you pledge the full faith and authority of the city and your ability to tax uh property for revenue. A revenue bond would be one where you pledge revenue from a utility, uh which is a more complicated process. In twenty twenty five, I'm on the second uh slide. The city issued ten point three million dollars in general obligation temporary notes for three projects. The industrial park, the par amount was three point two five million, the Buckeye Avenue project or was referred to as C clip one and two was one point nine million, and the recreation improvements for four million. The remainder, approximately one point one million uh was borrowed to pay interest on the notes and the issuance cost. And that interest that you borrowed was to pay that through March one of twenty twenty nine, when you'll have to uh issue bonds. On the next page, uh this summarizes the uh general obligation temporary notes. It shows that uh, well, first you issue ten point three two million, the interest from issuance to redemption or the amount of ish, interest you're going to pay is one point two million dollars. So the total debt service at between now and March first of twenty twenty nine is actually eleven point five six million dollars. Capitalized interest or the money that you borrowed to pay interest is one point zero six eight million. Sometimes you'll hear me refer to it just as one point one million. Under this uh temporary notes, you can redeem uh portions of those beginning March one of twenty twenty nine. The graphic in front of you shows you that the first year or in March one of twenty twenty six, the interest you'll pay is a hundred ninety three thousand, then in September, a hundred and seventy four thousand, and it stays that amount until uh March first of twenty twenty nine, where you'll have to pay ten million, three hundred and twenty thousand plus the interest. So a total debt service in, on March first, twenty twenty nine of ten point five million dollars. In all, you'll paid eleven point six million dollars for this, these notes. Uh, which, when we got those funds, uh we invested those. The current investment is uh Astro Bank has a six month CD at uh four point zero, at seven and a half million dollars. We also put two and a half million dollars in a money market at four percent interest. And the reason we put that in a money market, well, the rates were comparable, but it's also, we could draw that out as those projects progressed. And currently we have a local CD for eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we're getting four point two five percent. But for the temporary notes, um the borrowing rate or the true interest cost is three point six seven. Uh, just to clarify, the true interest cost in a bond is that's when they calculate in the financing portion of it. It's not the rate uh that we're paying as far as interest on the money borrowed. Uh, what this slide shows is that we have strong local rates currently, but they're likely to soften as the uh Fed eases the overnight rate. So the result is um if the trend keeps on going the way it looks, we'll get into a negative arbitrage, which means that the borrowing cost uh is greater than our investment earnings of those money. The next slide shows you a slide of what that looks like. Uh, the yellow line, which is flat across the graph, is uh our borrowing cost, the percentage rate, and the other lines are the different type of investments that we can or that we can make. For example, the um overnight investment pool, the Kansas municipal investment pool, and then what uh various term CD rates are. That's just an illustration. Uh, negative arbitrage. Currently, you're paying three point six five on the borrowed funds. Uh, that's a true interest cost, but the actual interest rate is three point four five. Um, and you earn about four percent on average on the investments. As the rates decline, your earnings will fall below the borrowing cost. Um, so holding on idle proceeds becomes less efficient over time. But hopefully we get those projects moving and uh you're using those funds instead of them just sitting here. There is an opportunity uh that I'm bringing forward to uh the commission to think about is uh to use part of the proceeds for productive purposes. This may seem a little redundant, but I think it's important to talk about these numbers. So you borrowed, the city borrowed ten point three million dollars. We received ten point three million. The average coupon rate's three point three seven five. That's the interest we pay on the money. Uh, the all in interest true cost, um that's an accounting time value. It's for an internal financial comparison uh when looking at your books. Our total interest cost on these notes is one point two million dollars. The earliest redemption date is March first. The final maturity is March first of twenty nine. And I'll show you in a little bit, but the, it appears that we borrowed about four point two million dollars more than we're going to need. Uh, if you look at the project summary.
To clarify, though, that's after we are reimbursed. The four point two.
But you'll be reimbursed eight hundred thousand. I'll clarify with Department of Commerce, but uh my position is the grant agreement sends, once you can show you have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or the thirty percent, you can request that two point five million.
Right.
We can request that now, put it in the bank, so we don't have to be reimbursed.
I would just, it, it says excess or unused proceeds. It looks like, I guess by just stating that, it looks like we borrowed four point two million dollars more than we needed to, but we had to borrow those funds to pay for the project upfront and then be reimbursed.
For the road project, not for the.
Yeah, just in general, yeah. Just, I'm seeing four point two million dollars that we borrowed that we didn't need, but that's.
I think just to clarify, I think we're, he's saying reimbursed, but Mr. Quinde's position is that the two point five million dollars doesn't need to be reimbursed. We just need to ask for the money, so not a reimbursement per se, but just a, a request, but certainly with the two point five, I'm assuming you're accounting for two point five million dollars from the industrial park and the eight hundred thousand dollars downtown, right? On the sea clip.
Yes.
And then the additional is um, is that excess interest or just, I think there's a little bit of fluff actually in the sea clip.
Some of those, some of those bids came in lower than we had estimated.
Well, if you look at the project summary chart, I think it'll uh show you or I guess better illustrate what I'm trying to say is the uh industrial park, the par amount of the bonds, the amount that we got from borrowing was three point two five million dollars. The estimated cost is three million dollars. Uh, I put in three point nine because currently the estimated cost shows two hundred thousand dollars for a lift station. I think that's under. Uh, but they are doing a study, which is part of the project to see exactly what they need. I would think that's going to be closer to uh nine hundred thousand. Uh, you received two and a half million dollars in grants. Once you could show you have your thirty percent or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you could request that. So your actual net need was one point four million. So that's where I'm getting the difference is, we borrowed three point two five, but we needed one point four. Uh, the road project, we borrowed one point nine. The most recent estimated cost is one point five. We have eight hundred thousand dollars in grants, so our net local need was seven hundred thousand dollars, but we borrowed one point nine. Now that one, Mayor is absolutely right. We have to pay and be reimbursed for that. The recreation project uh borrowed four million, estimated cost is four million. Uh, so there's no over borrowing. So in total, you borrowed nine point one million dollars. Project costs are nine point four. You have three point three million dollars in grants that you've been awarded, so the net local need is the six point one. And that's where I came up with the, the four point two because of what you borrowed. Which I can see your point, that's ten, I mean, ten point three is not for the projects, but you borrowed the interest, so uh that's where I came up with that. Ten point three two minus the six point one.
I think just, yeah, so we're clear that we're not getting the interest back, so I think that uh the number is lower than that for sure, but I think the point still stands.
So you have several options and I'm assuming the uh uh option A that I'm, that's in your slide is what the plan was. I'm not sure, I, I can't find any record of it. But would be for redemption of any unused proceeds. So you borrow this much, the grants cover this much, whatever we don't spend, you redeem on March first of twenty twenty seven. Uh, there's pros to that. It avoids uh a hundred and forty thousand dollars of interest for two hundred and eighty thousand through twenty twenty nine. There's no arbitrage risk, which uh, under five million dollars. Well, you're not under five million. There's no arbitrage risk. It simplifies accounting uh and there's positive optics. It demonstrates conservative financial management. Uh, I came up with that hundred and forty one thousand dollars per year in savings, taking an estimated four point two million and multiplying it times the uh uh coupon interest rate of three point three seven five percent. The cons uh of that are loss of flexibility. Uh, you cannot re-borrow that amount of money without new issuance and cost associated. Um, potential delays if projects uh can be deferred three or plus years longer. Uh, in that time, you're looking at fifteen to twenty percent inflation. So there could be a lost opportunity to use money that you've already paid for uh to fund urgent and eligible needs at the current low interest rates that the city has. And like Commissioner Kohoff said, for the cost of borrowing that money that you're already paying regardless. Option B is one that uh I'm bringing forward for the council or commission's considerations is a partial redemption. And what that is, you can reallocate a portion of the bond proceeds for capital improvement and equipment purchases. If they are, one, identified on your approved capital improvement plan and equipment reserve plan, you have to go through public hearings uh and uh pass some resolutions and ordinance. The pros is uh interest savings. You would avoid uh three point three percent of the annual cost by doing a partial redemption. Uh, there would be no arbitrage risk. And my notes on that one are not right. That would allow you to identify projects that have been deferred or are being deferred uh that you would like to see done, because if you don't uh it will be a higher cost potentially in the future. An example I'll give is uh three bridges that you have in town need a polymer overlay. Uh, what that will do is that will extend the life of those bridges. The cost is about three hundred thousand dollars. It is not budgeted for. There are no funds for it. But at some point, the city will be forced, if we don't do the polymer uh overlay, to reconstruct the surface of those bridges. Close them until you can get it done. Or borrow money to get it done and what that cost is. If you go to slide thirteen, there's a financial impact snapshot, and then I'll get into yes, the, the meat of what I'm trying to discuss with you. So the financial impact that if you do a full uh redemption of unused bond proceeds, there's no extra cost to you. there's no extra cost to you. If we assume that you'll have four point two million dollars of unused proceeds, and you redeem half of those or two point one million dollars, it's gonna cost you a hundred and forty thousand dollars in interest. But it'll avoid approximately three hundred to four hundred thousand dollar in cost increases by deferring projects just due to inflation. And that's over a three year period. If you did no redemption, which I'm not suggesting, uh, you would pay two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in interest, but you would avoid six hundred thousand or more uh in deferred cost increases. And this column that says estimated cost escalation, those numbers in there are costs that you avoid by using the funds sooner instead of delaying the projects or equipment purchases for three or more years, uh, which is showing you the opportunity benefit of keeping some of the available uh funds available rather than redeeming them on March one of twenty twenty seven. How that would look at like for debt service, uh, if you did no redemption, your adjusted debt service would be ten point four nine million dollars. If you redeemed half of them, then your, so you redeemed two point one million dollars and you kept two point one for projects that you identified as priority, you would save a hundred and forty one thousand dollars. And your adjusted uh debt service would be ten point three million. If you did full redemption, you redeemed all four point two million dollars, uh, you would save two hundred and eighty three thousand dollars between now and twenty twenty nine, and your adjusted debt service would be ten point two. So uh, if you were to reallocate two point one million dollars, just say two million dollars of uh unused funds, your annual debt service would be a hundred and forty one thousand dollars uh more than if you redeemed all four point two million dollars. That makes sense. So if you redeemed the four point two million in twenty twenty seven, uh, the bond issue that you'll have to do in twenty twenty nine is uh smaller, which will save you about twelve thousand dollars a year or about a hundred ninety thousand dollars total over the life of a bond. And on here, I've got two scenarios, um, this is on slide fifteen. If you were to uh redeem all four point two million dollars, you would uh, the amount financed, you would have to finance about ten point two million in twenty twenty nine. Uh, your estimated annual payment would be one point two one million. Your total debt service would be twelve point one four. Your total interest one point nine. At a twenty year, uh, the amount financed would be ten point three five. Your debt service would be seven hundred and sixty thousand. Your total debt service would be fifteen million, and your total interest would be just shy of five million. The biggest financial driver is the term length, uh, ten years, obviously lower cost, uh, but tighter budgeting, twenty years more affordable yearly payments, uh, but much higher interest rates.
Which interest, what kind of interest rates are you projecting on those ten and twenty year?
Uh, three or four percent.
I mean, even your own projections show that they're significantly less than that. On your slide number five. I mean, you've got those rates going into the twos and threes.
Yeah, those are for CDs. This is not what we're paying somebody to borrow money.
Right, I understand that, but we're also talking about just the overall interest rate environment. If the interest, if the the funds, the, I mean, right now, we've got real, real math, right? We can put this money in the bank at four percent, we borrowed it at three point three, true cost three point six. I mean, I think that those rates are going to correlate, if not perfectly. If the rates drop a percent, uh, the rate that we borrow at will drop probably similarly, if not exactly.
Yeah, and I wouldn't uh agree wholly because I've never seen general obligation bond interest rates at two percent. Generally, those people who purchase bonds are looking to make money off of those. I don't know many people that are gonna buy a bond for two percent uh interest, they'll put that somewhere else.
I'm not saying two percent exactly, but I mean, I'm just looking at your slide here. If you, if this is actually true, um, we should, we could probably make some money here, but uh, you're you're projecting somewhere between most of these rates falling between two and three percent. And I can look at the banker here and get him to break out his crystal ball. Um, but I think the likelihood, I'm I'm, I would, I don't know if it's legal to bet a dollar, but I would bet that the rate that we have on those permanent bonds is lower than what we have on the temporary bonds. I'm I'm willing to bet anybody a dollar on that if anybody wants to take me up on it. Um, and so I think that, well, I I don't disagree with your assessment in theory here. I think it's helpful to look at real numbers. Um, and I think kind of along those lines, the four point two million number is probably not realistic. Just as far as what we could actually redeem. Um, and then understanding we can't do any redemption until twenty twenty seven, correct?
Correct, March first, twenty twenty seven.
Um, certainly, I think the the commission anyway would agree that there's at least three point three million, so the number is somewhere between three point three and four point two, kind of depending on the actual out of pocket costs. Um, well, really for the industrial park and the and the C clip project. And so I guess, I guess I'd like to make decisions with the best information that we have. And so like even looking at your estimated cost savings of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, I just, I don't, I don't think that four point two million number is real. So maybe it's three point three of three point five or three point nine. Um, but just kind of making sure everybody understands what we're looking at for real budget numbers there. I'm curious to hear what the rest of the commission is.
Oh, me just to take a step back, um, the overall numbers aside, overall point is um having a very likely large excess um beyond our current, uh, what our expected expenses are, and that excess is here in these temporary notes. Do we choose all or a portion of that excess to be retained for other projects that have been delayed? The question is that I I have is when would that decision need to be made? Um, cause kind of what's been highlighted here in your presentation and then in the packet is right now we're in a pretty much money neutral scenario where our borrowing cost and what they're in the CDs add is 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 pretty close to matching, but we could get in an environment where our borrowing cost is exceeding what what they're actually earning. So it's like putting the money to work. So when, I guess, when would that decision need to get made? It's good that to have the commission being thinking about it, cause it's a potential roughly four point two million dollars or less amount that the commission would have a decision on where that would go. I guess to distill all that, when, when do you think the commission needs to?
You can do that anytime between now and twenty twenty seven.
Yeah.
Uh, the reason, well, bring it to you now is to get the idea in front of you.
Right.
Time to think about it, but uh, second part is for the commission to identify projects or equipment that you consider critical that have been delayed or put off for three years because of the budget constraints. Uh, and I will just throw some out there, um, some more road projects that uh we've identified, we bring you a list. Two or three police cars that we put off for three years, so end point three years, when you can afford to start buying police cars again, you're gonna have to buy way more than that or come up with something else. The community center, for example, it has, I believe, nine air conditioning units throughout it. One or two of those has been down for a few years, and administration's known about it, but they're still down. So I asked Kelly to get a bid to replace them, uh, two of them, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. When you replace all of them for two twenty five, they're all in the same standard, and you sell the working ones to somebody else uh that that can use them. Those are, there's no legal timeframe you have to do it by, but as far as picking projects and getting them moving, that would be, I guess, the qualifier.
Right, so yeah, so the the question or priority for the commission is putting that money to work or reducing the long term debt that that's eventually gonna have to get bonded in in the geo bond.
With the caveat that if you take that option, it's likely that you're going to have to borrow money or not do those projects and replace that equipment.
Those projects are gonna have to get done.
Correct.
Eventually, no matter what.
And what those costs, you know, those costs could realistically be lower. But yes, you, you said it much quicker and better than I.
Oh, yeah, just thinking the overall concept, so. So really, this discussion is closely tied to what we'll be talking about here next is capital improvement, and so um yeah, I guess just keeping this at the front of the commission's mind and then the newly elected commission's mind of awareing that this is a vehicle that a decision needs to get made on where you're weighing that you continue to delay projects. And the benefit you get out of that is a reduced geo bond debt, or do you allocate some of that to get those projects done, but you are gonna have a larger note um when it goes to long term financing?
And tha- that was the purpose of showing what the those potential debt services, the difference would be. Is it worth that twelve thousand dollars a year type thing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
I do want to point out, uh, get back to Commissioner Kohoff's comments. Uh, one, this presentation is based on assumptions. I can't tell you, I don't have a crystal ball, I can't tell you what interest rates are today or tomorrow. Um, you do have in front of you, uh, if you don't, uh, but I think I passed out to you an interest rate outlook and supporting sources, which give you the actual URL that I use from the Federal Reserve Economic Projections issued in September twenty twenty five. Uh, the Doolittle U S economic forecast issued for the third quarter of twenty twenty five. K Mips, uh, and with uh their board, their summary and their outlook uh for interest rates, market projections, uh, from Investopedia, uh, public fund investment context, from the public fund ma- asset management, uh, the Federal Reserve, uh, and then an overall interpretation. Because interest rates and what they're gonna do with all that change, here are some sources, uh, so I'm not making things up when I'm giving you these presentations. Then just look and see what the CD rate was at U R S or sunflowerbank.net. Go in there, Ryan, uh, put this, I did some homework and some research to put this together.
And I appreciate it because it, to me, it's very thorough and it really helps me understand.
And it is based on assumptions, and uh, I'm not advocating for you to do either. But I would be remiss as a city manager not to provide the city commission with options or things you're looking at. If your budget was sound and you had a strong capital improvement equipment reserve, I would be sitting here saying pay it back all at once. But you're at a, I guess, a crossroads where you have this opportunity. Now it's just a decision on, uh, what do you wanna do with it?
Um, yeah, a lot to think about and chew on, and I think a lot of it hinges upon the the next item too. Trying to think of a good way to make sure that it, we don't want it to just completely slip, but we don't know that we need to rehash the same thing every commission meeting.
I have a couple more questions here that I wanna get to, and I think this might be more for Sydney Attorney Martin on the uh arbitrage. Um, I've just done enough Googling to be dangerous, so I don't know if you have a, either yourself or a city manager Quinde can give us a little bit more detail on that.
Well, I'm not prepared to speak to that today. I do know I have seen in the context of municipal bond issuances that municipalities are required to execute arbitrage certificates evidencing that they are not intending to issue those bonds solely for the purpose of arbitraging the proceeds and and make profit. Um, so I'm aware that there are certain prohibitions in that arena. However, I, just from hearing Bond Council speak uh when we issued the temporary notes, and I, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but I do recall he anticipated that we could potentially park those funds in a yield bearing account. Um, so I, I don't believe that the simple act of doing that implicates those concerns. Uh, to me, I think it generally relates to what is your intent when you issue, particularly geo bonds, but I would have to research more to know and speak to the parameters of when that becomes an issue. Uh, and perhaps Mr. Quinde has experience with that, but I do not, and I'd be happy to look into that, get up to speed and report back at the next meeting.
Yeah, I just, I, like I said, I've done enough Googling here to be dangerous, but it it looks like there's a couple of exemptions, the one you mentioned, like whatever the intent is, we're not allowed to just go borrow money just because we can make a percent spread on it, that's clearly illegal. Um, or it's not illegal, you can do that all day long, you just have to send the money to the IRS when you make a profit. Um, but it also looks like it excludes temporary, which is anything uh three years or less. So I don't think that that's, I guess, I'll send you the link here that I'm looking at. Um, but I don't think that that's a real concern. I think kind of another part of the discussion there too is the money from the, is it Commerce that issued that grant? Um, you know, that is certainly something that there's no rules on arbitraging that. Um, if we can get four percent on two and a half million dollars and we can get that in the bank tomorrow and spend it out over the next year or so, we could potentially have a hundred thousand dollars in interest uh income just from that two and a half million dollars. I think just generally, where I'm at, where I'm at is I don't have any appetite to spend this money, the bonds that were the bond money, anywhere other than where it was initially allocated. I feel like that kind of um, maybe works to undermine the trust that the public has placed in us. If we have other projects that we need to spend money on, we can find ways to raise money for those.
Yeah, I think just a lot to chew on and think about. Um, but thank you for bringing it up to us. Yeah.
I'd love that, um, in addition to uh researching interest rates and potential costs, not just pulling them out of the air, I did uh have this discussion with the city's financial advisor and bond counsel and uh make sure that it was legal and okay to do before bringing it to you, and they said yes.
I guess to your point, I think if we did decide we were going to spend, we, the commission, not we, me, uh, decide we were gonna spend money, I don't think there's any restrictions on that two and a half million dollar rebate. That would be our money, I think. As we've discussed it previously, that was intended to pay off that bond, and I guess uh deviating from that would be something that we should do with extreme caution.
Yeah, and I think, uh, I think we're on the same page with that Commerce grant. We have to expend our thirty percent match, which is seven hundred and fifty thousand, in order to draw down that two and a half million.
That's not how I read it.
Yeah, and I I go back and forth on reading it. So.
Was, you're, and that's just so I'm clear here, you think we just need to ask for the money. We have to have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the bank, we ask for the money, they should send us the check, and I, your understanding, and this might be my, what my understanding was, is that it's actually like pro rata, so for every dollar we spend, they'll send us three. Does that make sense? So like if we spend all seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever, they'll send us the two point five million dollars. That's not exact math, but is that?
I read it, I read it again after we had discussed that, and I, yeah, I I'm not a hundred percent set on either way.
I mean, how I read it, it says that uh, once the city can show that it has its thirty percent share.
Cause it does not, yeah, it doesn't explicitly say it's been expended.
If it, once the city can show that it has uh uh its share up to thirty percent or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then it can proportionally ask for that. So if the city had five hundred thousand dollars, they could proportionally ask for what percentage that is in the two point five. The city can show we've got seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar city here, ready for our thirty percent share, you can ask for the whole two and a half million. So by doing that, then you're, you could earn interest on that until you expend it. And it does have to be expended for the uh uh, the project.
Right.
But rather than them holding it, it's an opportunity for us to make money.
Yep.
I do have a call with Commerce about to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I'm sure you don't need our approval to do that, and the, I was actually surprised. Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I'm sure you don't need our approval to do that, and I was actually surprised that it hasn't already happened. Um, certainly, I think that's the the right way to go to get that in our bank account as quickly as possible.
Agreed. Okay, do we have anything else on that item in the meantime? Okay, seeing none, we will move to item eight E, discussion of the ten year capital improvement and the equipment reserve and funding needs interim city manager Quinde.
Uh, as Commissioner Kohoff pointed out, there was a capital improvement plan that I found in the vacated office. Um, we've changed the format of that to what is included in your packet, and this format uh shows what the cash balance is on the top line at the beginning of the year. Uh, then it shows the proposed expenditures by year. Uh, and then it carries over showing uh what you end the year with and what you start the new year with. Then there has revenue columns and then uh expenses by department. The items that uh, we had to go back and redo this, and the reason it wasn't brought to the commission during the budget process like your policy says is we're not moving any money into those, so there was nothing to purchase. Everything was pushed back three years. With the opportunity of potentially using uh, or reallocating some of those uh note proceeds, we did put items uh back in uh just for the city commission to get an idea of what the staff was looking at. Uh, the first one is the capital improvement plan. Um, the integrity G I S aerial image update of twenty thousand dollars, but that's just to update the maps for uh city use. The parcels and things like that, believe it was eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars and was budgeted this year to be done, uh, but we suspended that cost. Make sure that uh we lowered our expenses and carry over as much money into twenty twenty six as possible. Generally, that would be in a uh operating um line item for departments, so that would be in community development uh under software or professional services. But we put it in here as uh, to get on your radar in case uh the commission is willing to reallocate a portion of those temporary notes. Same thing with the walkability study. That's normally a item that is budgeted in community development. And uh to refresh your memory, that is the study that's required for us to uh get grant funding. Uh, basically assesses the condition of all of our sidewalks. Then the um structural assessment of the fire department. Uh, we originally had on there uh replacing the bay doors, talking with the fire chief and the assistant fire chief. We believe that it's more prudent that we have a structural engineer come look at the fire department because the floor is sagging where they park those trucks. And that's what's causing the issues. Primary reason for the the doors not sealing and water and snow getting in is you can see the floor sagging. So for safety reasons, uh, that's on there to get structural engineers come in and say there's no issue, that's just normal, or you need to shore it up, but we have a back base uh opinions to prioritize what we need to do next. The uh, community center HVAC, that could be a hundred and ten to two twenty five, the two twenty five is put in there to replace all of them. Uh, the rec center gym floors, if it takes out, uh, park shop expansion is in there, but it's not highlighted, so it's not what we consider a priority. Uh, the Eisenhower bicentennial restrooms uh are been approved. The C club expenses that you see that are not highlighted, those are things that have already been improved by the commission. Uh, new projects that we identified that have been delayed and will be delayed another three years are a millon overlay of northeast fourteenth street. And then also a millon overlay of Cedar Street from fifth to fourteenth. At four hundred and fifty thousand and three hundred thousand dollars respectively. And then a polymer bridge overlay, um, or three of them done at the same time, highlighted in yellow with three hundred thousand dollars. And the red is a public works facility. Um, I put that number in there, but I have no idea if that's going to be three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand, or a million. But in part of my time uh visiting the different facility, one of the buildings that is occupied and used has termite damage. It's pretty significant. One of those things that is damaged is a little buried. Are you conceiving? So at some point, uh, something's going to have to be done with the existing public works facility. We could take people out of there. Uh, we've had it inspected and right now it's okay. I don't have to close it and and condemn it, but at some point it's going to get weaker and weaker, so that has to be addressed. So that's on there, just to have on your radar. Uh, on the equipment reserve, the uh tornado siren and the siren battery backup, that's part of the rotation that the city is going through to replace some of those outdated ones. There is a train vehicle that's on there. Uh, I don't think it would be that amount, but currently uh, we pay anytime an employee goes to trainings or meetings, we pay them mileage at the IRS rank, which is seventy cents a mile. The amount of time we send somebody, it would make sense that uh that if the city would purchase a vehicle that they can use for training, but also that the maintenance supervisor could use uh, or the maintenance manager when he's going from building to building rather than seeing who's not at work today and what uh vehicles available. The box blade, the fifteen hundred dollars there, uh, that should be fifteen thousand dollars that we can get by without it. Police cars, uh, in twenty twenty five, the city count, city commission authorized in the purchase backup, they authorized ninety two thousand five hundred dollars in the twenty twenty five budget purchased police cars for the police department. I suspended the uh purchase of those because of the budget condition that you find yourselves and also did not allocate any money for the one that is scheduled in twenty twenty six. You can see that that normal with uh most cities that you do a uh one year, one vehicle replacement, and then based on the number of vehicles you have, some years you do two. And what that does is keep you in a constant rotation, uh, rather than trying to purchase, you know, dozens of vehicles at one time. So I've included in this uh ninety two thousand dollars and then fifty thousand dollars to replace those three vehicles if the city commission was to reallocate uh some of those funds. To give an example, one of the patrol cars had an axle problem. I don't know if the chief standing behind me, but it was close to four thousand dollars uh to get done. We had to get it done because you couldn't move it or drive, and it's one of the vehicles we have left. Uh, in car cameras, it's in red, that's seventy thousand dollars. The ones that we have uh are sitting to get outdated, no longer supported. However, we do have a uh C D S request or congressionally directed spending uh request in through Senator Moran's office. However, with the current uh state that the federal government's in with the shutdown and then how they're going to pass a budget, I don't know how that's going to look, but it's not highlighted in yellow as an immediate need because we're still hoping to get that grant. A public works vehicle is on there, a single axle dump truck we pushed off another year. We did have uh two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for a tandem axle dump truck. Uh, but Brad and Joe were able to get that fixed for under, under twenty four thousand dollars. Uh, an asphalt planer, uh, one ton flatbed truck and an excavator. Are on the equipment reserve list. It's important to note that the list that I showed you are things that were on the capital improvement plan um, that were identified but taken off because of uh no funds for it. This does not include equipment or capital projects for the utilities or uh fire apparatus. Um, just for the departments within the general. Are there any question?
So as you mentioned earlier, you, um, I sent you an email that I a bonehead move and didn't hit send on Friday, so I noticed it in my drafts today that I sent you. Um, on some of those, you answered some of them. Um. And you're uh in going through these items. Um. Could you maybe email about a response to the whole commission on on other ones that weren't included?
She had, yeah, yes.
Can you want to ask ten of them here?
Can you clarify on the portable radios? There's kind of some jumble in there.
I can, I probably answer that. Um, you will, aren't seeing that job.
It was like a Excel error, yeah.
Yeah, chief, how much of the portable radios?
Oh, so we was able to get them replaced just recently through the county's uh tax, and then we're just, if they're on there, they're on there uh for twenty five, it's because we didn't know if that was going to go through. Now that I did, we're good on radios now, but they're, you know, a ten to twelve new life span.
Okay, that, that, can you, is that just, there's like a ten point oh five oh million plus two hundred and thirty dollars plus eighty one thousand plus.
That's a formula error.
Okay, yeah, I just know what what was intended to be there.
And uh, thanks to the chief for pointing that out. Uh, he was another one using vacation to uh, try to get a burn down.
So is there not supposed to be anything in that field?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Have any further questions on that? Like I said, I emailed you ten, so, but you did, you addressed quite a few of them in your, in your responses there, so. Seeing none, we'll move to item eight F, disposal of surplus property interim city manager Quinde.
Yeah, the uh, there's no specific policy that outlines the process, uh, dispose of city policy. So talking with the city attorney, we default back to what the statute uh allows. So what we bring before you and will ask you to approve in two weeks is a list of equipment that is no longer used uh by the city, and we're going to ask permission for uh to authorize us to dispose of that by public auction, and the public auction venue would be uh Purple Wave. Uh, I guess the one thing I'd point out is the uh payment kiosk is out there. I'm not sure we're going to get it out or just going to buy it, but that's uh one of the things that we no longer use. We were paying four hundred dollars a year for those three people to use it, paying a per transaction fee. And the COVID money, there's no limitation.
Is there a competitive bid process or any other process that we need to be following for finding a vendor? How do, how do we look at that? It's kind of a a different piece of the purchasing policy, isn't it? The unpurchasing.
Well, we use Purple Wave because uh they don't charge us anything. They will come photograph the equipment, they will record the serial numbers, get copies of the title, they advertise them, they handle all the payments and they're how they make money is the purchaser pays a premium on what they paid for it. So that's why we go with Purple Wave because there's no cost to this city. We can uh go for bids for, I guess, uh auctioneers, but generally they charge the person selling. Purple Wave is not.
Are you familiar with the uh entity that's in the county? There's a Gov Planet. I think it's a Richie Brothers affiliate. I don't have any idea what their payment model is, but it's five miles from town.
I'm familiar with Purple Wave because Slaney uses it, and I think, um, I think even like some colleges may use it. Like, yeah, so it's been around for a while.
Because they don't charge you to use it.
Yeah.
There's, and they do all the work.
And you look into
We've used uh Gov Deals uh a couple of times too, that they both have some pros and cons and I, I guess on my preferences on my side is I like a little flexibility. Uh, we've been doing research and uh, Purple Wave, uh, it, the fire trucks have uh consistently brought more than on Gov Deals only advantage that Gov Deals has or Purple Wave, you can set a reserve. Purple Wave you can't, uh, so I mean, we kind of just got to take the uh, educated, this make an educated decision on he go with.
Yeah, just so you're clear, Gov Deals, it looks like it's different than Gov Planet, which is out, okay? Okay, okay.
So there's pros and cons, I guess, so.
Okay, so maybe that's good guidance. I mean, I think, I think we should
Wait for two weeks. If the city commission wants to uh approve or declare this as uh surplus and then direct us to go out with bids, we can do that.
I don't necessarily want to
Recommendation and use
I don't necessarily want to go out for bids, but I think it sounds like there's times when maybe one vendor would be more appropriate than another. So I'm fine with flexibility in that too.
To uh just put incentives um in the right place, um, it's I, I don't know how the money flows, but in selling surplus property, I would assume than that money made goes back to that specific department.
Uh, where it was expended from. So um, if something was just out of the equipment reserve, it would go into the equipment reserve. It was purchased out of the department's operating budget. You put it back in that operating budget, uh, start, I guess, aligning your policy with best practices. If you sell equipment, um, it should go into the equipment reserve because ideally you purchase all of your equipment out of there instead of some from this department, some from that. You have one place where you can see where everything's being purchased. So I would lean towards they may have paid for it a couple of years ago or five years ago, but if we're going to move towards clarity, but everything that was purchased through the general fund into the equipment reserve as um auction proceed. And then if it was something from the water or wastewater, we put it in their reserve. But you're still giving them their money back. It's not theirs, it's taxpayers or the ratepayers, but for fairness, yes. Only thing is, I would recommend it goes to the equipment reserve, not to individual apartments. Cause we're moving towards that, just that one area. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, well, just thinking how it would play out of having the flexibility where staff's kind of got the discretion of where, where it's best to sell it to, they're going to have the most bang for the buck because it's going to go back into a budget that is tight. So um, since budget's tight already, I think there's all the incentive for staff to find find the venues that are going to get the most money out of it.
Well, I'm assuming that the fire truck was purchased out of fire apparatus, so the proceeds from there would go back to fire apparatus. Where we should be buying the equipment from, I mean, the thing wouldn't be, the truck wouldn't be intermingled with the uh, the general fund.
So what you're saying is, you know, let's say, um, Kale determines that Purple Wave is not the best avenue to sell this truck, and he thinks it's best and we'll get more money if we sell it through this entity. Is that what you're kind of getting at, is leaving that flexibility to the department heads?
Yeah, I just think the incentive's there to get, yeah.
And that's what the, the recommended course of action is, is just to authorize us to sell it at public auction. So like uh, Christian Wood said, we get a better deal for fire trucks over here, we get a better deal for payment kiosk here, we make the most benefit. Uh, but if the choice or decision of the bodies go out the bids, you see this is the best price for uh that, we can do that also.
So I mean, we could declare the identified property a surplus and authorize the staff to sell it at public auction and remove using Purple Wave, so that way they have the discretion to use the best avenue to sell that.
But then it's still a public auction.
Right, yeah. It's like, you know, if you have a guns, you're selling on an auction, you wouldn't pick an auctioneer that specializes specializes in miniature dolls to sell them. I mean, it's just, you're going to know who, who does the best work, and I feel like the department heads being, they've been through that before, so you probably have a pretty good idea of which entity does best with certain things.
Cause they had a similar scenario with the old back truck. I think the old super back truck where originally we were looking at one place and then found another venue to where we were able to get much more money out of it. That's the most recent one I'm thinking of.
Yeah, and with patrol cars, uh, we get more money training them in than you'd ever get on uh public auction. I think we're averaging nineteen thousand dollars. Those, that's pretty good trading on a car that runs all the time.
I think it'd be good for staff to kind of have an understanding of those expenses. It sounds like you understand Purple Wave really well, and I understand it more as a buyer than a seller. So I think, you know, if there are multiple platforms, it sounds like you've maybe used Gov Deals, Gov Planets five miles away, Purple Wave is nearby. I think it'd be good for, if we do have that policy, that everybody understands what is expected, because I think there's actually different fees based off of the type of equipment that it is to, and I think maybe Purple Wave has moved away from everything except kind of that heavy equipment.
The Purple Wave charge, like if you personally want to sell something, they charge you a sale fee, but for uh, government, that they waive that fee, so there's nothing tied to it.
Where's Mudd? Do you have any further questions on that item?
Guess clarification on Commissioner Call, once it's better understand by sending out policies or do research, I'm not sure.
I think it's just important, I guess, even if there's just an internal memo that says, hey, Gov Deals charges five percent, Purple Wave doesn't charge anything. So if, if they are ten percent higher, but they know, just kind of have some exposure to what those, those fees are if we have those in place. I assume we don't have to have a contract or anything like that to sell on Purple Wave or.
Is that according to the commission or the public or, cause we meet monthly and we discuss every item on the agenda. If the commission were to say, yes, declaring this surplus property, those are at public auction, we talked about, okay. What's this company going to do as far as fire trucks? What's this one going to do for this?
I, I guess, I don't need to dictate how that happens. I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm looking at Gov Planet right now and there's a fire truck on here for thirty thousand dollars. I just want staff to have that exposure that there may or may not be fees associated with any one platform. So if they're trying to maximize the revenue, just that they have an understanding of what those platforms might charge to the city as a seller. Whether it's a, you know, flat fee, fixed fee, percentage fees.
Yeah, I, I get that. I just that makes complete sense. I just would point out that from my short time here, that staff does due diligence on the stuff that we bring to you and before making decisions. Whether it's Purple Wave or all those different ones. We don't arbitrarily pick something because we know job. We do that. We do due diligence. We look at even with the reallocation. I can't tell you on a crystal ball how much you're going to make and what these projects are going to be. I can give you an overall idea based on these. And they do that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that was, yeah, I think that's the point. Just make sure that, you know, everyone, that's part of the discussion.
Still not tracking you, I mean.
Make sure that that, those, the things I think about with the, the fees associated, blah, blah, blah. Or I think, is that what you're getting at? Is that just part of the discussion?
Yeah, which, yeah.
And I get that, but I guess in the context, report back to you or internally, because internally the administrative portion, that's the part that I take care of. Policy, if you want policy or memo that says, you know, we want you to lay this out, give us things and we'll decide.
No, 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 my, I guess, the direction that I'm hoping is getting across is that that's internal. Just, I don't, you don't need to report to me. But just that the staff has an understanding. If you've got new staff, different staff, I don't know.
That makes perfect sense and at least until January, that's occurring regularly. I've been doing it for a while and I trust your department heads. I've been nothing more than impressed with them. They truly do what's best for the community and the organization. And if I see that they're not, or there are not many expectations, I hold them to task. But at some point, you know, I give them autonomy because they're the experts.
Yeah, I guess I just I have a lot of respect for city employees as well, but I don't expect them to be experts in auctioning. So I guess that's where I would put that back on the city manager to just make sure they have that clarity.
That give you what? Yep, okay, sell at public auction.
Well, yeah, we'll bring it back.
Right.
For permission.
Okay. Next item is eight G, discussion regarding proposals for the search for a permanent city manager. Interim city manager Quin Day.
In your packet is a copy of all the proposals. Commissioner Kohlhaas pointed out that one of them is missing some pages. So I'll identify that and send it to you if you find it necessary. I can also send it to you as one individual packets, however you'd like. Also in your packet is a recommended criteria for scoring and weighting, which is just a recommendation. It's completely up to the city commission, how you put criteria and how you weigh each one of those factors in there. And based on that, for the city commission to discuss and provide to staff what you'd like us to do that.
I'll start off and having this many respondents is a lot to go through.
Yeah.
Um, I think in the most efficient way to say it would be good for me to know what the rest of the commission's thinking and if we can narrow down a, a top three, top five right off of that. Um, that way we can dive into more, or that even I can go back and read those proposals that we kind of narrow down to a top, to a top three or top five. So we can kind of hone in on that first.
You're in luck because I made a top five. That way I could cut it down to top three if needed.
Awesome.
You know. Um, do you want to start or?
Uh, you can go first.
Okay. Um, so I kind of built a very rudimentary spreadsheet, I guess. Should have done it Excel, but I was already halfway through by the time I had that thought, so I kept going. Um, I went through and scored them separately and then multiplied the weightings. Um, and I I scored L K M as my top, followed by Gallagher and Raftellus. Um, I think it'd be helpful to, I guess, if we have others that are very close on those, we could go to a top five, but um, I think it would be helpful to cut it down to three. It seemed like after that top five, there was a pretty big drop off for me. I guess my fourth was Benzinger and Associates and then fifth was MGT Impact Solutions.
Who is five?
Uh, MGT.
Who's four then?
Benzinger.
Okay.
Or Banzinger, I don't know how to pronounce that.
So what are your top three? Like if you had to?
Well, I use the, the weighting of twenty five percent approach to recruitment, twenty percent for their experience, twenty percent for team qualifications, twenty percent to meet the time constraints and then fifteen percent based on the like the mayor said, or the recommendation. So GPS professional solutions, got a total weighted score of four point six five. Um, Bob Murray and Colin Bezinga tied at four point three eight with the league at fourth at four point two five. And then Dee Watson at four point two three. Anytime I gave him above a four, it was a strong proposal. Anything at three or below was not as strong. Her approach to recruitment, uh, GPS, Bob Murray and Bezinga earned my top scores for being detailed and community engaged recruitment process. Firm experience, GPS, Bob Murray and Bezinga again, they had the longest and most relevant track records. And then the other firms primarily with corporate HR portfolios were much less. Team qualifications. Now, the firms that were led by former city managers or involved in or senior municipal professionals scored the highest. Um, all top ranked firms proposed a well-defined schedule, which would be achievable in eight to twelve weeks. The league offered the most economical pricing while GPS and Watson were competitive and balanced. So my top tier, like I said, scored between four point three and four point seven was GPS, Bob Murray and Colin Bezinga. Uh, strong local options, approximately four two, four point two score was L K M. Uh, combined with their Kansas familiarity and value-based pricing. And then I go down there at the four range was mid-tier Raftellus, RSI and MGT. And then Gallagher, Red Envelope and NetSync were less than four.
Early ratings.
I'm excited to hear everybody else's. My opinion matters the least since I won't be here in January, so I can, I can go or go last.
I like the league just because I have a little bit familiarity with it, but, um, and that was your top one. And I think that was your fourth when you said your first list and so.
Yeah, league was in my top three. Yeah, I had top three of league, Raftellus and GPS.
Raftellus too? Then GPS three? Thank you.
Commissioner Cole, did you have any?
I think kind of, I was really surprised by people who seemingly would have no clue how to do this. Applied for, applied, presented an RFP anyway. There's, I guess, a number of people who have never, it appears hired anyone in Kansas. And then just some really unprofessional proposals. I think, you know, looking at the, the cost, certainly the league was the most economical. Um, there's a certain familiarity. Uh, I think with both parties, the league and the city. I really didn't look much further than that, to be perfectly honest with you. I think kind of what I know about them, I've spoken with a couple of people who've worked with them recently on hiring for their city administrator. Um, and I guess I feel comfortable that kind of all things considered, that they're going to deliver the best candidates and the best value.
Okay.
I think just for points of discussion here, there are a lot of open-ended budgets on these as well, where they say you're paying actual expenses um, with kind of broad variability. I felt like the league was a lot more measured in what they presented as well.
Maybe some of them had a, they have an allowance for expenses, I think.
And I'm not sure, I guess, there was one that looked like they were purely West Coast. And so if you look at travel expenses for somebody from the West Coast, you're looking at a different scenario than somebody coming from Topeka or Wichita.
Yeah, I remember that one. That one was kind of odd. I thought it was interesting to list your placements and every single one was in California. Oh, know your, know your audience here.
I think there might've been one in Oregon and one in Washington.
Yeah, maybe.
Give them the benefit of the doubt.
So it sounds like the lead's consistently at the highest spot across the people here today. So do you want to just focus on that one?
That'd be my preference.
That's my preference as well. In order to expedite, if that's the the consensus or is everyone amenable to making that business decision now? Cause I know we're gonna, we're looking at timelines and we're starting to get tighter. So that way we can get them engaged.
Do you want a formal agreement from them first?
Yeah, I was, I guess on this, I was thinking of just giving guidance or taking commission action to uh, enter discussion with them. So that way we're not waiting two weeks just to start talking to them.
And happy to have a special if we need to improve anything to keep that moving.
Yeah. With that, I would make a motion to begin engagement and reach out to the League of Kansas Municipalities uh, for abling search for a permanent city manager.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
Can you directing staff to do?
Seeing none, a material call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Do we have any reports under heading nine? There are none listed, but for make sure. Um, and then item ten A, area ten A is an executive session. Uh, do you have a good feel for how long?
I'll let Mr. Quin Day um, chime in if he thinks fifteen minutes is appropriate. I'm waffling between ten and fifteen. Ten, okay, ten, ten to start with.
Yep. Uh, would you be willing to entertain thirteen minutes and we'll re- resume in here at six fifty so that I can hit the restroom?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Read it off. I'll move the city commission recess in the executive session for thirteen minutes to include the city manager to discuss with legal counsel matters regarding real estate and property interest of the city based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA seventy five dash four three one nine B two. The open public meeting will resume in this room at six fifty.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Seeing none, a material call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. We are in executive session.
Oh. No, no, you're good. Yep. Sorry, I let my, my anger flare a little bit. Apologize. Not professional. No, but I, you, I didn't clear that. What if we wanted to buy something?
Right, so
Right, so, uh, some means that I would be here on a, 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 maybe it wasn't.